All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 6 City Council Budget Workshop and Regular Business Meeting. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website address: If by chance you join this meeting using any other link, we ask that you log off and re-enter the meeting with that website provided. Public comment on any item apparent on the agenda may be sent to public comments@louisstonmain.gov prior to or during the meeting, and all comments received will be forwarded to the City Council. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Start on the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Khalid and seconded by Councilor Clement. And if the clerk wouldn't mind, could you just read the executive session order?
Sure. The motion is to enter into an executive session pursuant to main revised statutes annotated Title I, Section 405, Subsection 6E to discuss a legal matter with the city attorney.
All right. Thank you. And if you could call the roll, please.
Sure. Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
No.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
And Word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 6 to 1.
All right. Thank you, and we'll see everybody in the executive session. And with that, we'll proceed to our budget workshop on general government and planning and code. With that, I'll turn that over to our city administrator.
Hey, Mayor, City Councilors, Director Hunter will guide you through this budget workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council and City Administrator. On the general government, that begins on page 38, with the legislative and executive divisions, which includes the city council, the mayor, and the city administrator divisions. In this, we have an overall increase of just shy of $23,000 or 5.5%. The first division is the city council. There was a $1,408 increase. It's going to be a city council orientation year, so we've budgeted for that to include the binders, the workshop days, and so forth. The mayor's budget is flat. The city administrator budget has a $21,558 increase, of which the bulk of that is in salaries at $21,497. We have a slight increase in contractual service of $75, and then we have a slight increase in supplies for printing, again, with the assistance of the city council orientation packet and so forth with the term changeover. The next division is on page 41. It's actually our city attorney's division.
I apologize. I had a question on...
Oh, sorry.
I think it might be for the city administrator. Can you tell us where the new laptop devices that were purchased for the city council, where those live, the maintenance and upkeep of those? I know they were purchased through grant funds.
Yeah, they were purchased through grant funds, and I believe that would be under our MIS department in terms of any other support needs in that.
Okay. Thank you.
With all of our computers and laptops, you know, support.
That's correct. So on page 41, the city attorney, that had an increase of $13,000 or a little over 16%. There's been an increased need for consultation on various legal issues, and some of these have some complexity in researching those issues. So the fees have risen slightly. Some of those are attributed to code enforcement endeavors, and at times, we do receive legal fees in return on a reimbursement basis. But it is, we are unable to count on those reimbursements until we're actually, it's on a cash basis until we're actually paid. Counselor Ray.
Thank you, I wanted to ask about this budget and does it cover all of the different lawyers who we use those through MMA? Those who the city contracts with directly for, I know I've seen at least three in different sessions, so just wondering if it covers all of them.
The only thing that's not covered in this particular line item is labor relation. Legal services, that is in the human resources department that we'll be talking about momentarily. But it does cover all other consultation. So the next budget is the city clerk's budget on page 42. We have an overall increase here of $17,688 or a flat 5%. We, on the city clerk side of things, we've had a $19,000 increase of that amount, $17,448. Was attributed to personal services. We had an increase in contractual services of $1,665. Of which 1,500 of that is due to the inaugural year. And you also have a $200 increase in supplies. That is related to replacing flags on the various municipal buildings. The election side actually had a decrease of $1,600. We have two elections this year, so even though there, we have less activity that is related to the presidential election. You have to budget twice as much because you're actually hosting two elections. With that, we had a decrease of $6,915. In personal services, the bulk of that is in temporary wages. And then over time also decreased as well. Contractual services rose by $5,230, that's for the printing of the local municipal ballots. And then we did have a small increase in mileage for training purposes relating to elections. Supplies is flat because Kathy was able to purchase most of the supplies needed for the upcoming elections through the grant. There are no questions, I'll move on to the finance department. So the finance department had an increase of $63,140 or 7.8%. Administration is the first division that had an overall increase of 4,500. That is all in personal services. We had, we did have a slight increase in contractual services in the telephone or the full year allocation of a cell phone stipend. And then we had a minor decrease in printing of just shy of $200. The purchasing department had an overall increase of $5,230. And of that, that is all in personal services. Accounting and auditing had an increase of $45,405 or 19.5%. The personal services rose by $46,000, that is attributed to adding back one of the frozen senior principal clerk positions. That was frozen for this current fiscal year along with COLAs and STEPS. Auditing did have a decrease in contractual services related to printing based upon the current inventory of forms and checks. The treasury division is on page 44. Had an overall increase of $7,735 or 2.3%. I will add, there's a hybrid new program and service requests made for treasury and assessing. Right now, there is a shared position that rotates between the two divisions. And we would like to make that a full-time position and hire a full-time position. So with the links of lines in the treasury department for new vehicle registrations. They need a full-time position, not somebody that's just there on Mondays and Fridays. And then Bill Healy in the assessing department really needs that clerical support. Especially as we get through the tax commitment and. Rolling in the new financial tax software and so forth. So that has the, the new program and service request for that position. Counselor Ray?
I'd like to add that position for $51,000 to the parking lot.
Okay. Additionally, in treasury, they had personal services increase of just shy of $2,000. You don't see as high of an increase in personal services in this division because of the staff turnover in that particular area. As you saw in other departments and divisions. Contractual services rose by a little over $5,000. $5,300 of that is related to lien recording fees. Related to delinquent accounts and notices to lien holders and the certified mailings and so forth. So we are seeing some of those accounts creep up in, in volume and it has a cost to us, obviously. When we go through and do the lien notices with that. Miscellaneous services also increased by $750 for shredding service. And we also do writs of execution and. Small claims on delinquent personal property balances. So as the liens have, balances have increased, so are the personal property. So this helps us with collection efforts for those two types of accounts. We did have a slight decrease to offset those other increases in printing and postage. Supplies rose by 600, I'm sorry, $768. And that's in office printing supplies and that's just print, general price increases as well as. We are still required to use the dot metrics printers for motor vehicle. And those cartridges are extremely expensive to replace, so that's where you're seeing those increases. They're kind of outdated as well. So price comparison shopping is not really available to us as you would see on other types of printers. And the last division in. Finance is the central services, we had a slight increase here of $250. We have some offsetting activities where. Contractual services increased in postage of about $500 for meter fees and so forth. And that was offset by repairs to equipment based upon credits that we receive for other departments using those machines and so forth. The next division is MIS or the management information or your IT area on page 45. We have an increase there of $82,964 or 15.3%. Of that amount, $21,000 represents an increase in personal services. The lion's share falls in the contractual services, that rose by $61,500. And of that, $59,000 is maintenance and licensing agreements. And the annual increase of all of the maintenance and licensing for all of the various software, security, malware and so forth. And then we are due for a new upgrade in intergov as well as telephone support licensing. So that had a little bit larger of an increase than the normal. Cost of living or CPI index that you see in other repairs to licensing. And we also had an increase in repairs to equipment for $2,000. Due to the age of some of our infrastructure, particularly in our printers. Supplies rose by $750. We had an increase of $1,000 in office supplies that was offset by a decrease in printing needs of the $250. Counselor Ray?
So I see here that $170,000 was requested for office equipment, has that been moved to fund balance or somewhere else?
Yes. So on page 46, we have assessing. So in addition to the position that we are looking at converting to two full-time positions. We are looking, he made two program and service requests for software upgrades. One relates to scanning of property tax information from the registry. It's a deed reader that automatically will upload into our new software. So that will save numerous labor hours as well as clerical errors and so forth when rekeying that information. The other component that he is asking for is the scanning of aerial photography to be able to import that into the GIS system. It will help kind of. Update his information that he's using for tax commitments on whether pools were added, houses, fences, so on and so forth. And just updating, updating the photography available to him. Other than that, the division rose by $34,483 or 6.3%. $35,400 relates to, I'm sorry, I'm doing planning, let's go back up to assessing. They grew by $10,000 or $99,000. And they had a personal services increase of $20,000. And we had, and that relates to the customer service position. We reallocated that this fiscal year, so it used to be 60% treasury and 40% assessing. And that's switched based upon the assessing needs. Contractual services rose by $911 in the telephone allocation as well as in. And that's where he budgets his tablet connectivity. And we had a small increase in supplies for office supplies. Human resources is found on page 47. That had an increase of just under $7,000 or 5.4%. There were two new program and service requests in this division or department, including the equity and diversity specialists. As well as training citywide relating to this topic of $5,000. Counselor Ray?
Both of those items on the parking list?
Okay.
The list, parking lot, I'm getting the terms confused, you know.
Okay, I know what you mean.
Heather, if I could just ask a question about assessing, where in the budget again, and we may have already gone over this, is the reevaluation cost?
That was initially budgeted as an LCIP item. It's up for your review to move either through fund balance up. I think at this point, it was recommended to be moved through fund balance.
Okay, can, if it's not already on the list or parking lot, whichever is preferred. Can you put that entire cost for the reevaluation on the, in the parking lot or on the list? Thank you.
So back to human resources. So that rose again by just under $7,000 or 5.4%. We had an increase of just shy of $3,000 in personal services. The biggest portion of that budget impact was in contractual service, which rose by $4,168. The first being 4,000, an increase in labor relation cost. As going back to Counselor Ray's question a few minutes ago, that's where you see that line item. And that's due to additional grievances and legal consultation with the bargaining units. And then we had a minor decrease in supplies for printing in HR as well. Planning and code enforcement is the last division that we need to kind of cover tonight. And that is on page 58. We had an overall increase there of $34,483 or 6.3%. And my apologies, when I talked about the aerial photography for assessing, that was really requested by the code enforcement office and the GIS. So again, that's the new program and service for $24,000 to be able to do some aerial photography for code enforcement.
Counselor Jensen has a question.
Could put that on the parking lot?
Sure. And so we had personal services that rose by $35,400. CDBG has changed their funding model for the administrator's assistance position. So that played a role in that large of an increase. And I will remind you that one of the code enforcement positions is still fully funded by community development block grant funds for the downtown area. Contractual services rose by just under $700. We had $500 increase in postage for additional violation notices. Those need to be sent certified mail and there, the certified mail costs seems to always be increasing, unfortunately. Supplies decreased by $530. We had a small decrease of $200 in office supplies and small tools of $330. Cameras and thermometers were purchased in prior years, so they seem to be all set in that inventory. And we had a decrease in fixed charges of $1,062. And that relates to plumbing fees. There's a direct portion of the plumbing fees that you see in revenues that gets remitted to the state. So this line fluctuates based upon the volume of plumbing fees that people are paying for. So that's directly tied to those fees and incorporated in that. And then that's all we were scheduled to cover tonight, I might remind you. And actually to the viewing public, anybody that would like to weigh in on the budget, has a suggestion, question or otherwise. Feel free to email either publiccomment@lewisdomaine.gov or you can email myself, Heather Hunter, or HHunter@lewisdomaine.gov. And we'd be happy to share that with the council and any question, address any questions you may have.
Also, if we could just remind the public, we have a public hearing this evening, a seven o'clock meeting. And then there'll be a second public hearing towards the end of the budget process.
The second public hearing is on May 4th.
Okay, and if you were about ready to say that, I apologize.
It's okay. And then Thursday night's workshop is covering municipal revenues, social services, the library, debt service. The intergovernmental agencies, which in this particular case, since we've always already done 911. Would include the airport and the transit system. And then we do start some general discussions on Thursday night.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we add to the parking lot, raising the mayor's stipend?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, I see one hand raised in the attendees during this workshop. So I'm just, I'll remind the public, if you have comments specific to the items that were brought up during the workshop. I will allow a public, public comment. And it'll have to be very brief, no longer than three minutes, so if we could bring in Anessa.
Good evening. Anessa, if you could unmute yourself. Okay, for some reason, you're still muted.
Okay, for some reason you're still muted. And I'll just, I'll share with you that we also take public comments at the email that was provided, which is a public comment. So publiccomment@lewisdomain.gov. So I'll give you one more opportunity to unmute yourself. All right, Dale. There might be a technical issue there in getting herself unmuted. All right, thank you. All right, any other questions related to the budget from city councillors? All right, it's got about ten minutes, just under ten minutes for our business meeting to start. So Counselor Clement?
Just wondering if perhaps we might be able to get a list of the items in the list of parking lot, whatever we're calling it, to date. Would that be something could be sent out to us?
Most definitely. I plan on sending that out. Check your email tomorrow. And then that way we can, you can start, some of them will have dollars amounts next to it because those have been costed out. Others, depending on what direction council goes in, we will need to calculate the, the costs. So you'll see some of my comments in that list.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, I, I assume that tonight we were going to work on economic development, but I see that it says accept economic development. So I'm wondering when that workshop will be?
Okay, there's two. We actually covered the TIF fund back on March twenty-fifth. When we cover the miscellaneous section, which will be on April thirteenth. There will be another opportunity to talk about economic development. That's when the new program and services, that's when I'll be talking about the two new program and service submissions.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wright?
Thank you. I appreciate other folks asking questions because I thought of mine. I've only seen from the paper so far what's happening in terms of the new Rescue America Act. I'm sorry, I don't know the actual name of it, and funding that will be coming directly to the city. Could you just remind us what amount that is coming in? And if there's any specific use case, when are we going to talk about how that's spent? Because I think it makes an impact on what we're considering with this budget.
I will definitely turn that over to Dennis, but I'm not sure we've received final amounts yet. And I know I'm going to have a training towards the end of the week that may help outline how that's going to be dispersed. But otherwise, Mr. City Administrator?
I, I, I think we can say at this point, the figures have been around twenty-one million dollars is what we're allocated for, for the city. How that's going to be dispersed, I, I've heard that it's coming in two different dispersments, we won this year, next year. And the rules just have not come out yet in terms of how we can use it. We've gotten some fence, some communications, but the actual details and rules and how the money can be used has not been delivered yet. So once we have that, then I would expect that we would be able to, you know, deliver a workshop with the city council to, you know, walk through that and talk about projects that would be eligible or different things that we, how we can apply the funding once we know the rules, I guess, completely. But we'll be able to bring that forward to the council for that discussion at that point.
Okay, that's super helpful. I think too, if we need to use a night we weren't planning to meet to do that, I think that urgency feels important to me. On the school side, we're using some of that funding because they do have their rules already in order to alleviate next year's tax increase. And so just really want to encourage us to think creatively about that.
Okay, thank you. Director Hunter, did you have a follow-up answer?
Real quick, because I know the question was already raised on how that impacts the tax rate. So if we get the information prior to committing the taxes, which is in late June, we can adjust the tax rate. Once the tax is committed for that year, essentially what will happen is similar to what we experienced this year with grants, is we will spend the funds appropriately with the grant and that we may reap the benefit of surpluses in certain line items that will lapse into the fund balance and would be able to be used in FY twenty-three during that time period. So it's all depending on the timing of things.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Khalid?
Thanks, Mayor. My, my question was just answered by the finance director, but I'm glad that we are able to amend the tax rate depending on what we get. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, we're down to about four minutes before our seven PM meeting starts. So we'll see you all there. Okay, good evening and welcome back, everybody. We're going to move right to our seven PM regular business meeting. Just a quick reminder, this session will be conducted remotely and the council members will only participate electronically. If anyone has joined this meeting, hold on a sec, for those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting with the following, using the following website, Public comments on any item appearing on the agenda may be sent to publiccomment@lewisdomain.gov prior to adjourn the meeting and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. And members of the public are welcome to make public comments. They must raise their hand. Once you're acknowledged, you just have to unmute yourself. All public comments are limited to three minutes. And with that said, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for attendance?
Sure. Counselor from Word one?
Present.
Word two?
Here.
Word three?
Present.
Word four?
Present.
Word five?
Present.
Word six?
Present.
And word seven?
Present.
Also attending this evening, Mr. Mayor, is the city administrator Dennis Dote, deputy city administrator Dale Dowdy, finance director Heather Hunter, and myself is the city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item is an update from city administration in reference to COVID nineteen. Dale, is any, any update?
Very little. City hall operations remain the same. We encourage people to do as much business as they can electronically. General assistance is by appointment. All those things are the same as they have been. We will be reevaluating with the next phase of reopening on May twenty-fourth, and we'll update you at that time. We are currently reviewing rec fields, recreation, opening some of those things up consistent with DCD and, and CDC guidelines, and we continue to evaluate those as reopening plan continues. And we continue to work with several healthcare organizations in the city for pop-up clinic clinics. We performed one at the Ramada about a week ago with our fire department and United. We'll continue to try to identify underserved communities and, and, and evaluate those pop-up clinics as they go.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from city councillors in reference to the COVID update? Counselor Wright?
I just wanted to thank those who worked on the vaccination clinic site in Auburn. I wish it were in Lewiston, but I've heard that the process has gone really smoothly from folks who have been over there. And just curious if they need more volunteers at this point, since we do seem to have a number of the public on here, if they need to help with the capacity.
They do, both, both medical and non-medical. And we can get out on our Facebook page, the, the ways in which you can volunteer, you can volunteer directly through CMMC, their website. You can volunteer through St. Mary's website, and you can volunteer through the state website. And we'll, we'll put those, we've put them up before, but we'll put those back on our website if somebody would like to volunteer. There may be other opportunities, as I said, for the pop-up clinics and some other things that may be coming soon. So if people are interested in volunteering, keep an eye on our Facebook page and website. There may be other opportunities coming up in short order in both of those.
And just, you know, because of a recent article, there's, is discussion in Augusta about a mass drive-through vaccination clinic. Is there anything available that you could share with that, or is that still in the works?
That's still in the works, but it's becoming much more imminent and more real. We had a request for support, material support and volunteers earlier this week. We don't have a, some definitive opening dates or structure yet, but I think that'll be coming up soon and we'll get that on the website.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from councillors? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of March sixteenth and thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jelineus, seconded by Counselor Clement. Call the roll, please.
Sure, Counselor from Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
And word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we're at the open public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding to issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. These items are items that are not on tonight's agenda. So this is more for general Lewiston City Government comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to take the opportunity for a public comment in reference to items not on the agenda? And I see, I see one new hand raised. Missella?
It's Michaela, but that's all right.
I apologize. Thank you, Michaela. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much for hearing my comment. Um, I am here today, I am a teacher at Lewiston Middle School. Um, and I am here today to urge you to reopen the basketball courts. It is getting warmer and therefore, even though maybe perhaps numbers, I can't necessarily predict cases, but outdoor transmission will go down. I'm a science teacher, if all is the laws of thermodynamics, if you want me to explain. But I don't think I need to on this session. I, and, um, I, it came to my attention due to the events that happened at Funzi this weekend. If you didn't hear about it, there was quite a bit of violence that was perpetuated between mostly students at Lewiston Middle School. Um, and many students who weren't involved in violence had to witness it as well. So I am asking you, reopen these courts because the kids need more appropriate places to congregate. Basketball courts are community monitored because they are in the communities. I, you know, I, maybe perhaps this is an assumption, but I assume there are Lewiston police cars that circulate through the city in near basketball courts throughout the night. Also, you could simply open them until sundown or eight PM. Yeah, I'm just really hoping that we can open these up, the kids, because the kids really need better places to play.
Okay, thank you, Michaela. All right, seeing no other hands raised, we'll move to the general item number one.
Item, excuse me, item number one, public hearing on proposed fiscal year twenty twenty municipal budget. Requested action to hold a public hearing on the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-two municipal budget. And Mr. Mayor, no council votes are needed. You can simply just open the floor for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing, and if we could just have a brief presentation by our city administrator.
Good evening, Mayor, city councillors, members of the public. As you know, on March sixteenth, we presented the, the draft or the, the budget to you. And, you know, since then, we've been holding workshops on Tuesday and Thursday evenings. All the way through, those workshops will continue through this Thursday and beyond. And on April thirteenth, the council will really begin the deliberations over the budget as well as a second budget, excuse me, budget hearing, public hearing on May fourth, which is also the anticipated adoption date for the, the budget overall. That's the process up to this point. This is again, just the first hearing of two, and the second hearing will be on May fourth.
Okay, thank you. So this is an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the overall budget process. If there's anyone else that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move to agenda item number two.
Sure. Item number two, public hearing on a new application for a liquor license for Splittenwood Axe-Throwing, twenty East Avenue. Requested action to authorize the city clerk's office to approve a new application for a liquor license for Splittenwood Axe-Throwing, twenty East Avenue.
Thank you. And I believe, Kathy, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
We don't, the application is in your packet, Mr. Mayor. I believe the applicants are also in the audience, if you have any particular questions for them. We will note that it is a first-time application, it's not a renewal, it's a, it's a new business to Lewiston. And the Police Department has reviewed the application and is recommending approval.
Okay, and this is an opportunity, I'll remind everyone, this is an opportunity for the public to weigh in as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilor LeJoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did receive the constituent concern this afternoon with regards as to the liquor license at that particular establishment. So their concerns were specifically in the type of atmosphere of throwing axes, I guess. Is it wise to have beverages there, alcohol beverages there? And I guess I would ask either the chief or the individuals that are there asking for the license. Are there other places, not necessarily in the city of Lewiston that you know of, maybe Portland? I know this is a new, fairly new fad. But I'd just like to ask if there's any other places that serve mulch liquor under those conditions, as well as do they have a policing group of, of workers that oversee the area in case somebody gets rowdy or anything like that? I'm just trying to clear the air somewhat for that particular individual that called me.
Okay, thank you. Probably a good opportunity to bring in the applicants.
Right, so, excuse me, for Dale's benefit, the applicants are Christopher and Julie Nichols. And they are in the attendee side, if you could boost them up. And then they'll just have to activate their microphone.
They're on their way.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you, welcome, Christopher and Julie, right? Now look at that, they got video and everything. Thank you, thank you very much. So Councilor LeJoy, so we did receive a constituent concern, they just didn't understand the idea of axes and alcohol mixed together, could you just share some of your thoughts with that, please?
Absolutely, so yes, to answer the previous question that Mr. LeJoy asked, there is a, an establishment in Portland that is also an axe-throwing establishment and they do sell alcohol as well as food. We do plan to do or would like to do the same. However, we would have a limit of two alcoholic beverages while they're in our establishment. And we do already have a process for ensuring that with each lane rental of only an hour, we are monitoring who in the lane has already had their two alcoholic beverages and then as sad as it may make them, cutting them off from any further alcohol. Also, to answer your next question, there are four employees on every open day's work and two of those positions are what we're calling the axe monitors, as well as the manager, which is Christopher. And so there will always be two people that are just walking about monitoring, helping people to properly throw axes as well as making sure that everyone is behaving themselves.
Great, thank you. And if we could just keep them in place as we work through councilor questions, Councilor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I question, much like the constituent of Council of Joy is the wisdom of serving alcohol. Where you're throwing axes, will it next be shooting ranges or whatever? A question for the clerk. If we approve this license, there is no probationary period on it, can we rescind the license at will? Do we have to have hearing or how, what's the process for that, Kathy?
Sure, so my recollection, Counselor, is that myself as the City Clerk has the ability to suspend immediately should there be any public health, safety, welfare items. I mean, obviously, I would not do that without the input recommendations from the Police Department, certainly. And then for the council, so that's a temporary suspension, I believe, until a public hearing could be held before the council. And then the council has the authority to do a full revocation, should they find it necessary. I can certainly clarify that for you, Counselor, but off the top of my head, I believe, an immediate suspension would be done by staff and then a full indefinite suspension would be done by council after an appropriate public hearing.
And the state also has that authority, their licensing division, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I guess I still have concerns, but knowing that we can intervene if it proves to be less than a desirable activity, I just, to me, throwing axes, I mean, not only is the public at large, but the person throwing, if they're a little tipsy, you know, I can see all sorts of things happening, but if we have a mechanism in place to revisit this without having to wait full year, then I'll go along with it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few comments after, but I'll move the requested action. And I guess my comments, I'm in supportive of this, I'm definitely going to vote in favor, I think this is an awesome business idea. I mean, as the City Council, I want to thank you guys for bringing the idea to Lewiston. We talk about having new ideas for more light, more nightlife and activities for young professionals like myself to do. I can see myself doing that, you know, like a Friday night or something with my friends, in fact, I probably will. So these are popping up around the country, they aren't like, you know, big concerns with them, they are done in a safe way. I'm certainly comfortable with the levels of protection you guys seem to have there. I think that was all I need to say, so thank you guys for getting a business started in Lewiston.
And hold on your motion to approve until we close the public hearing, if we can. Councilor Jelineus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christopher and Julie, thanks for bringing this forward. I am sure that you used, you know, a lot of diligence in terms of laying out this plan and you referenced that there's another establishment like this in Portland. Do you know how long they've been around and, and when you talked about some of the guidelines that you want to put in place just to ensure that, you know, there's good activity or good monitoring going on? Did you model that after this already established business or what could you add about that?
Sure, we've actually been visiting the axe-throwing establishment in Portland personally for almost two years now. We found it to actually be a very fun and challenging, you know, opportunity for ourselves and so we definitely wanted to bring it forward to this community. We had also heard there was one in Bangor that has been quite successful as well. So we've, we have visited their establishment in Portland a number of times. Christopher has actually been in contact with those owners, just to ask them a couple of questions, like how did this work? How did you start? In total disclosure, selling of alcohol is a secondary piece to this establishment, it is not our primary focus. And we would probably be more apt to pull it ourselves if we were personally concerned, because we don't want to see the activity stop. I work for Lisbon Public Schools, I do a lot with planning and orchestrating reopenings and safety, security is number one for me, so I've been on top of a lot of that component of the business from the onset of our idea. So he's more of the entertainment mastermind and I'm more of the now all ducks in a row, all policies, all procedures, know if hands are butts. So it is definitely not something that just, that we have thought lightly about, I will say, that has gone with a lot of thought and action, for sure.
I don't want to be known as a bar. You rent the lane for an hour and it's only two beer limits, so it's an hour, you're going to spend more time throwing fun things and you are going to be thinking about drinking. Yeah, that's, and then safety is number one, safety is number one. You will get a speech beforehand and you need to listen to it, I need to see you throw. There's a lot of rules that we're putting in place to make sure people are safe.
Right, well, I appreciate that, I mean, I've actually been to one before in the state of Texas, it was a blast, it was so much fun. So I'm really excited to see this coming to our area, so thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Patton, go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually at the Portland location only a couple of months ago, it's a blast. If you haven't thrown an axe in the proper confines, I highly suggest checking it out and checking this out when it gets open. So I'm very, very excited for you guys to get this off the ground. And exactly like you're saying, once you get in the lane and you throw that a couple of times, your focus is not going to be on pounding back, you know, with a whole bunch of beers. And it, I'm, it sounds like it's going in the right direction, so I'm highly supportive of this and I can't wait to see what you guys can do.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ray?
Thank you, I echo many sentiments that have already been brought up, I think can actually be somewhat therapeutic to participate in this activity, maybe you could stay open after a council meeting one night and we can maybe do a retreat there.
I think that's a great idea, council retreat. Councilor Khalid?
Thank you, maybe this is obvious, but do you need to drink in order for you to throw the axe?
No, absolutely not.
Just some people, you know. We're hoping for that date night, sometimes you can't get your husband out, maybe unless you offer that one beer.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we are in the middle of a public hearing, are there any public comments related to this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I believe we have a motion pending by Councilor Jensen.
Let's second the motion.
Okay, moved by Councilor Jensen, seconded by Councilor Ray. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
And word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
All right, thank you, Christopher and Julie, we really appreciate your new business here in our community, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 3, please.
Item number 3, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Little Joe's Bar and Grill, 740 Sabato Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to Little Joe's Bar and Grill, 740 Sabato Street.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Jelineus, seconded by Councilor LeJoy, with that I'll open the public hearing, Councilor Ray?
I just wanted to ask, I could not read much of this application due to the handwriting. I see that it's recommended for action, so I'm good with it, but I just wanted to make sure that the clerk can maybe go back to these folks and clarify their contact information in case something does come up in the future.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, to the public, questions or comments in reference to a renewal application of Little Joe's Bar and Grill, a special amusement renewal application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council, questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
And word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 4, please.
Item number 4, public hearing and final passage to rezone the property at 186 Oak Street. Requested action to approve final passage to amend the land use code and zoning map for a zone change request from Community Business to Neighborhood Conservation B for the property located at 186 Oak Street.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Jelineus. I believe Director Hediger has now joined us for a very brief update. Just to, and just to share with the public, we had a recent workshop session that went a bit more in-depth. But yeah, if you could give us a brief update on that, Dave.
Sure, as well, this is the second reading on this item. The Strouts have submitted a petition to rezone their property at 186 Oak Street from the Community Business District to the NCB. If you folks refer to the package, you'll see a zoning map in there that shows the different zones in that area. Basically, their property is zoned with a 20-foot setback, which really limits them being able to do any improvements. The Strouts are looking to put a detached garage on their property with a 20-foot setback, side setbacks on a 50-foot wide lot, pretty much makes that impossible. When you look at the zoning along that entire area out there, there's some question as to whether or not it should even be zoned, Community Business. So the Planning Board and staff supported this change for the specific property to be rezoned, Neighborhood Conservation B directly across the street is NCB, so it's not as though we're spot zoning or anything to that effect. And both staff and the Planning Board agreed that we should be looking at this area in the future for potential rezoning, more properties along Oak Street to become Neighborhood Conservation B and then looking at the properties that are but main street for some other type of commercial zoning.
Okay, thank you. And did I actually say the words, opening the public hearing, Madam Clark?
I don't think yet.
Okay, I apologize. So we, with that, I will open the public hearing and I turn it over briefly to the council for any questions or comments. Okay, seeing none to the public, any questions or comments on this rezoning? This is our second public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. And seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
And word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hediger. Agenda number 5, please.
Item number 5, order authorizing the acquisition of a utility easement for a new storm drain pipe at Ford Janes Boulevard. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the acquisition of a utility easement for a new storm drain pipe at Ford Janes Boulevard.
So moved.
Total.
Okay, moved by Councilor Jensen, seconded by Councilor LeJoy. Okay, with that, we have Director Friendcheck here, if you could give us a quick overview?
Hi, Councilor Mayor and Councilwomen and Men, thank you very much. This was, came from a complaint from somebody that had a really bad icy spot out front of their driveway this winter and there was nothing that we could do at that time in the middle of the season. So we did say that we'd come back in the spring, would help fix this problem. And there happened to be a drain pipe that was blocked and they didn't have a basin on their side, but their neighbor is going to have their driveway fixed at the same time, because that's what it was supposed to be for, but it had been, you know, just gone bad, it was a 1960s installation, so we had no easement. And so the people who originally came with the complaint is now giving us an easement to put a drain pipe through their yard to go out to the back of their property, so we're fixing two different properties' driveways that have been a longstanding problem, so we're really excited, they were excited to have us come back and actually be fixing it. And we're happy to have them, you know, work with us to give us this easement and so there's no cost exchanged. And we'll be making two families on Jan Avenue very happy.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public? Back to the council? And call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yeah.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
And word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 6, please.
Item number 6, order adopting the Lewiston Equity Statement as the Equity Statement for the City of Lewiston. Requested action to approve the order adopting the Lewiston Equity Statement as Equity Statement for the City of Lewiston.
So moved. Second.
To a man.
Okay, we already have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm just, we had like two or three people throw out a motion, so I'm going to grab, Councilor Khalid made the motion, I just need to know who seconded it. Councilor Ray?
Yeah.
Okay, so at the same time, after, just after the the motion for first and second came, Councilor Clement moved to a Councilor Clement moved to amend, uh, how how do we work that, Kathy?
Well, sure, so you have the motion on the floor, which is to adopt the order that's printed in your book, um, so then it's open for discussion, so then Counselor Clement can propose, um, an amendment to the order, if that's what his thought is.
Okay, uh, so Counselor Clement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will state right off the bat that I've had some communication on this, none of which is in favor of it. However, based on the council's action at our last meeting, we referred this matter to Corporation Counsel for him to review and, uh, make us aware of his wisdom on the, uh, item. And he has come forth with a recommendation for the addition of the following clause at the end of the second to last paragraph of the proposed equity statement. And that wording would be the addition of the words "in keeping with federal and state law." I have many objections to the, uh, statement as originally proposed, but having listened to Corporation Counsel and having an assurance that my major concern has been addressed by the addition of this language, I will drop any opposition and I can see myself voting for this. Otherwise, there's just no way I can, based on the, the, uh, comments that I've had from constituents, many of whom are, I would say, at least two of them vehemently opposed to the language. So I leave it at that, with the amendment, I would support it, without it, there's no way I can, thank you.
And I just, I want to clarify just a statement that you made, that the attorney was making a recommendation. Was it, was he providing an alternative or making a recommendation? So I'm not, I'm not sure he actually.
His wording exactly, Mr. Mayor, in that regard, I would recommend the addition of the following clause at the end of the second to last paragraph of the statement. End quote.
Thank you, all right, so, uh, so I, we have to address the the motion to amend first. Uh, is there a second to the motion to amend?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion to, uh, amend, uh, by Council Clement, seconded by Council Joy. And so now we'll deal with that amendment first, so is there any discussion on the amendment? Uh, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, yeah, I vehemently oppose that amendment. Um, during our executive session, our city attorney made extremely clear that the language is not necessary. It's not necessary, it's 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 an, it's an overkill, if you ask me, it's an exaggeration. We asked him if we could add anything, and the response was, I mean, you could add this. So I don't want it to be implied that he was suggesting that we should, because he wasn't, absolutely not, it's unnecessary. If you actually look at the memo that our lawyer provided to us, he said that it's clear through through what this, um, the document implies, that the city is not in any legal trouble, nor will we ever be. He made that very clear, so I want that to be extremely clear to the public, that was what was said to us. So, to me, adding in this extra language is completely unnecessary. If we're going to add the language into this, why not add it into every single ordinance that we pass? Because it would apply that we're going to follow state and federal law, of course, but we don't, because it's already implied. If we add that standard to this equity statement, and we don't hold other actions by the city council to that same standard, how is that not racist?
Okay, thank you, Councilor LaJoy.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a very simple statement that is put in the bottom, and what it does is it it, uh, states the fact that, uh, the city will follow or or will be in keeping with federal and state law. It's not an implication, an implication can be debated in court in both sides, whereas this statement here specifically states that the city will follow those guidelines. So I think it's a very, very simple, uh, amendment to put in there. I don't see any reason why not put it in there, even though, uh, it's been stated that it might duplicate, uh, another statement that's implied. This one is not implied, this one states a fact, and that's why I agree with it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I think Counselor Jensen spoke wisely to the point that this is not a necessary addition. Um, I find that, uh, making an effort to amend, to appease counselors, um, I'm under no illusion that this would be a unanimous vote for the amendment, nor for the main motion that has already been made. Um, I think, uh, an attempt to, uh, put in, put this in, um, again, I'm just going to be repeating Counselor Jensen, who phrased it quite nicely, um, this is unnecessary, it was not the advice of council, it was an option presented to us, um, and I I ju- I wholeheartedly disagree with the addition of this statement to water down an equity statement that has been worked on by members of this community, so, for so long, um, and so thoughtfully, um, just feels petty at this point.
Thank you, Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would advise my colleagues that we have a written recommendation from Corporation Counsel versus a verbal comment. I do not see this as watering down anything, it's clarifying the language. The language, and I think the attorney said this, there are parts of it that are ambiguous. My objection to this whole thing is that we cannot embrace illegal immigration. That is in federal law, there are four statuses of citizenship, and those are obtained by immigration process. Okay, the fourth status is illegal, somebody who has overstayed their legal visa or has entered the country illegally. I don't think I need to point out to anybody the problem that exists currently on our southern border. They're pulling Border Patrol from the northern border of this country to augment the already, uh, excessive staff that's on the southern border, because thousands of people are entering our country illegally every day. The federal government has indicated that they may want to start moving some of these people that they are catching and releasing to northern border states, those states which border Canada. I think that would encompass Maine. I don't have any problem with somebody coming here, as I said before in our previous meeting, I am the product of immigrant parents, my mother was an immigrant, she came here legally, as did her five brothers and sisters and my grandmother. And, I mean, she brought the kids here after her husband died, I won't go into that whole thing, but they did it legally, there is a process. You do what, I got no problem with that, I have no problem with any of the other language in this statement. A statement which, by the way, I do not believe we commissioned or requested, it just suddenly appeared. But if we're going to adopt something like this, let's do it with the idea that we do not want to invite, embrace, or encourage anybody who is not legal. I mean, that's, that's the, uh, the long and short of it right there. And I reiterate that the attorney gave us a written recommendation to add that clause, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jensen.
Uh, yeah, again, we, I flat out asked him, like, to to his face at our meeting, if, you know, there's confusion over, over this, and he flat out said that the statement itself makes it clear, um, it's completely implies that we're not doing anything illegal. We're not putting the city at risk, nothing like that is happening. So again, comments that that are pointing to that statement, the memo that our attorney wrote, we we just met with him, he flat out told us, it wasn't just a statement in passing, he made it very clear that we do not need this added language.
Yeah.
It's already protected through what's implied, and I think there was a confusion about, like, the difference between imply explicit and implicit. So, no, the language itself doesn't directly say it explicitly, but again, it's it's what's, it's it's the implication, it does imply it, so, no, it's not going to be written directly, because that's not what an implication is. Um, but that that it needs to be written out is just not necessary, so I I want to make clear that our attorney did say that. And use of the word illegal, I bu- I believe he also talked about how the word illegal, when it comes to, like, an individual, is not really relevant in this type of situation. So it kind of seems like we're just hitting on a lightning rod in politics here.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I just want to note for the public's sake that there's a document being referenced that is part of confidential materials for us, and so, um, you know, it sounds like, uh, folks are interpreting that legal document that was provided to us in the way that they, that aligns with their beliefs and values, and that's up to them to do, and they'll vote that way, on on this vote for amendment, and then the main motion, uh, if it is to be amended, or if the main motion, if that's what we're moving forward with, um, folks won't see that, so, um, believe what you will, but, um, I just think there's just no, no excuse for some of the language that has been used and rhetoric that's been used over the past couple of weeks to describe this equity statement, um, and its legal validity, we are trying to build a city that welcomes everyone, and that has been a huge part of my experience here in Lewiston, has been so valuable. And so to take any human person and say you are not valid to the city is just disturbing.
Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would just remind my colleagues that federal law, our attorney did not address this, but there are definitions in there as to who is legal and illegal, and there is federal law under Title Eight US Code that says that you cannot encourage, condone, invite, whatever language you want to use, I mean, there's a whole host of terms in there, somebody to come to this country illegally. That's all I'm asking, is we define and clarify this. This motion, uh, satisfies me, it's not as strong as I think it should be, but I dealt with this issue for five years. I was assigned as as an enforcement officer for Immigration and Customs Enforcement out of Manchester, New Hampshire, and it would probably make you cringe to know the number of unlawful, undocumented, illegal, whatever you want to call them, immigrants that come particularly down through from Canada into this country. Okay, uh, it just, uh, it's a problem, the federal government is wrestling with it right now. Uh, the numbers that are coming in, these people are going to end up somewhere, uh, and I'll tell you, they gravitate towards the north. That was my experience of five years, they're ca- they're caught, they're released, they got into the country. Some are not even given a court date now for their immigration status. So, it's, they're picked up ten to twelve years from now. But the addition of this language, I will support this equity statement, I have a lot of problems with some of the language. I'll put those aside, and I will support this if the addition of that clause. Otherwise, there's just no way I can do it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khalid.
Thank you, Mayor, um, you know, for council members to call fellow human beings illegal is very dehumanizing, and I hope we can stay away from using that term. Um, and also, you know, our community members came together and wrote a very simple statement, a few paragraphs to commit our city to, you know, equity and social justice, and, um, what's that have to do with the sou- southern border in the federal level? So I hope we can, you know, stop embarrassing else ourselves, um, and, um, you know, continue to support this equity statement unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, so, you know, this evening, we've heard the term petty, uh, embarrassing ourselves, uh, and I just think, you know, a counselor, uh, has a right to make an amendment, and, uh, I I don't believe that it's appropriate that we, uh, challenge that counselor with words that could be, uh, seen as insulted. And I understand this is an emotional issue, I for one don't see the need for this implement, you know, this this added, but I also believe that, you know, our country is facing crisis right now, so for a counselor to make an amendment that is like this, I do not believe is out of the ordinary. So, Counselor Clement, please, uh, let's just try not to repeat, uh, comments previously made, if we could.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, just for purposes of clarification, I am not calling anybody illegal. The illegal comes from definition in federal law, that's a classification that's applied, much like somebody convicted of a felony or a misdemeanor, they're a misdemeanor or they're a felon. Okay, when they cross the country border illegally, they become an illegal alien, that's a definitional term. I'm not referring to them, I'm not dehumanizing them, they are breaking the law, period, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, seeing no other hands raised, we'll turn this over to the public, any comments from the public? Okay, I see one hand raised, just a quick reminder, uh, comments are limited to three minutes, uh, and with that, could we bring in Abdi? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening, thank you all, uh, thank you for allowing me to talk and, uh, giving me the space. Um, you know, I just wanted to say that some comments that are being made here today, uh, just as a person of color, as a person that's a immigrant, uh, it's very unwelcoming to me, uh, my family came here, uh, to seek a better life, you know what I'm saying? And, um, some people, if they could do it the right way, they would, um, but to label people as such, even if the definition of, you know, in the dictionary or the US, whatever the case may be, says illegal alien or whatever, for a city counselor to say that, or for an amendment to be added to the city that's, uh, trying to be more inclusive, um, is just, not just dehumanizing, but it's heartbreaking, because for us to move forward, uh, you know, that amendment would only be pushing us backwards, not forward, so. And I I appreciate the counselor that, you know, is expressing what he believes is right, but, you know, I just wanted to say that we had a previous mayor that told people to leave their culture at the door, even if, even when they came here legally. And, um, for this to be added would just, you know, it would bring us back steps, and we're just trying to move forward with everything, and, uh, be the city that the, that we can be and be better, thank you.
Thank you, sir, uh, I see one other hand, Linda Scott.
Hello, thank you, this is Linda Scott at what, at forty-five Pettingill Street, um, so I'd just like to say a little something, I grew up in Lewiston, my whole life I've lived here. In the early nineties, when my husband and I started having children, we made the decision to move to Portland, and one of the reasons we made that decision was because we wanted our kids to grow up with diversity, which I did not grow up with in this community. When I moved back to Lewiston in two thousand and one, I can't tell you how proud I was to see diversity coming into my city. I know that there have been a lot of issues, but I truly believe that all the different people that now live here make this community and this city a better place, and I'm very, very proud to call Lewiston my home. I absolutely support this equity statement, as it is currently written right now. I listened in on the meetings when this equity statement was being drawn up. I heard all the work and saw all the work that was done, and I would hope that this whole city council would support this and want to see what is what I see a really great thing for our community, welcoming and embracing everybody that lives here, everybody that comes here, thank you.
Thank you, and I see Mr. Mohammed's name is raised, or hand is raised. Good evening, sir.
Uh, good evening, guys, uh, can you guys hear me?
We can, and you have about three minutes at most, sir.
All right, I won't need that long, um, hi, my name is Ibrahim Mohammed, I currently live in Lewiston, uh, Maine. I'm a Muslim, um, Somali, African-American, uh, black, um, male, um, and I support this equi- equity statement, and I feel like, uh, I know I've heard a little bit about the illegal status, and I know illegals, a lot of people usually look at them as in like a negative way. Um, but sometimes people that come into this country illegally, um, you must know that sometimes because they're running from a war-torn country, or just conflicts in their own country, and this is like a safe haven for them, so, and so I just wanted people to like, kind of, before just loo- looking at ille- uh, ile- illegal the illegal immigrants as in a negative way, maybe, in that per- perception as well, though I I do, I would like to say that it it, yes, it would be better if they could come here legally, but sometimes that's the reason they come here illegally, and like, um, also, I want to add on to what the last person said, that diversity, I mean, having diversity, it's shown, I think even in studies that have been, I first in a workplace brings new ideas and better. First in a workplace brings new ideas and better ideas to the table and companies that previously. Didn't have diversity, now now that have diversity can solve a problem because someone. Uh, better or come up with a better solution because someone from a different background is adding to their ideals and whatnot. So. Um, that's that's all I wanted to say. And thank you guys very much for hearing me out.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comment. Uh, Fatuma Hassan.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, Fatuma. Go ahead. Oh, she's gone. Hold on one second, Fatuma.
Okay.
Can we just take the other gentleman out? All right, thank you. Go ahead, Fatuma.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say very quickly that, um. Many of you have talked about the equity statement and and how much work went into it, which I, um. I was there from day one and we've done a lot of work and has included many people. Um, throughout this process, I, as a person who works, have worked for the last twenty years. To promote diversity, to educate everyone. Um, when I came to this country back in nineteen ninety-three, um. The woman who helped me get into where I am was a white woman. I come from a background of a lot of hardship, but also a lot of resilience. And I have a very blended family that's very blind to skin color. Um, I have a second mother who is a white woman. She's a nurse practitioner. And, you know, helped me to drive, to buy my first car, delivered my first two babies. Very, very much a part of my life. I say all that to tell you that Lewiston has come a long way. And that Lewiston did it on its own. When I came to Lewiston on February fourth, two thousand and one, we only had three Somali families in Lewiston. Today, we've got thousands of Somalis and other immigrants and other communities. Lewiston is a symbol of hope. It has become the beacon of change. It has spearheaded the entire state. We all work together and we work it in a very good way. We collaborate, we partner. And so I feel like twenty years later. You know, for us to come back to where we started. Is 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 a bit taking us backwards. And so I think it's important to also recognize that many of us who are on the ground. Don't, you know, harbor people who who are here to cause harm. In fact, as a community, we work together to enrich our communities, to develop. And create a strong foundation for our children and many future generations to come. And so I just want to really urge the council to support this equity statement. It is symbolic. Today, in the last few days, we had the 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 trial of. George Floyd. It's the moral and the just thing to do. And that we must work together to ensure that everybody in Lewiston, regardless of your background or skin color. You are seen as who you are and you're included. And so I urge for full support of the equity statement as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Fatuma. And I just, uh, would like to take a moment to acknowledge all the work you have done in the past twenty years. Uh, uh, helping, uh, bridge a gap, uh, with folks. I know you make me a better elected official with the things you do. And I think, uh, many councillors could say the same. So thank you. Uh, Counselor Ray.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify on procedure from here. Um. We are still debating the motion to amend a no vote when the role is called would reject the amendment. And we would move to the main motion and have debate and public comment. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, then I will reserve my future comment. Thank you.
All right, uh, so seeing no other public comments, uh, bringing it back to the council on the amendment. And Matta Clark, can you just read the amendment again, please?
Sure. Uh, the amendment is to add, uh, the following statement. At the end of the second to last paragraph of the equity statement. And that phrase is in keeping with federal and state law.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to reiterate the fact that I am supportive of this entire amendment with. Of the entire statement with this amendment. I think that clarifies a major area of concern. I don't think that, uh, it has been addressed adequately in legal review. I don't think it does anything to harm. It does not. Uh, shame anybody. It does not belittle anybody. It just says, hey, folks, there's a process. Follow the process. That's all we're asking. I mean, we put up speed limit signs. We ask people to follow the process. It's called voluntary compliance. I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, you know what that means. We're just asking people to do what is right. And, uh, that that's all I'm asking for here. I will support it. I've got. No problem with diversity. We chose to move back to Lewiston, my wife's home. Knowing, uh, what the community has become, what it is, and I welcome what's going on. But we just have got to be careful of how it's done. That's all. The comment was made during public comment session. Some people come here because they come from. Uh, areas that, uh, war-torn, whatever the case may be. There's a process for that. It's called asylum. And all they have to do is declare at the border. They're not going to be turned away. They were for a period of time held in Mexico. Uh, until their asylum status could be reviewed. Now they just crossed the border and they're they're released into this country. So asylum seekers have not to worry. In fact, uh, I understand within the last couple of days, two people on the terrorist list from Yemen. Walked across, they're on the no-fly list, so they walked across the Mexico-U.S. border. There was a press release from Customs and Border Protection to that effect, which all of a sudden disappeared. You can't find that anywhere anymore. So I'm in favor of it, provided we come up with the amendment. I don't think that amendment hurts anything. It does not belittle. It does not label. It just says that you got to do it in keeping with federal and state law. That clarifies an ambiguous statement.
All right, thank you. Counselor Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it short. Uh, I'm the one that asked for, uh. Uh, the legal review of the document because I thought, uh, any document that comes before us. Especially dealing with, uh, different issues, uh, should go through a legal review. Uh, prior to be presented to us. Therefore, if the question is asked, uh, the individual presenting. Uh, the item, uh, will state, yes, uh, it's been looked under legal review. Uh, and these are the opinions, uh, and so on. And that's what we did. I I didn't do it to delay, uh, this particular, uh, issue. Uh, I did it for a specific purpose. And that was to protect us, the city of Lewiston, and us. The council members as well as our citizens. I didn't think it was too much to ask. And the city council, uh, agreed. In a vote, the city administrator without, and I've got legal counsel. We had a review. He came back, he made a recommendation. Whether that recommendation, uh, mimics. Uh, a implied statement that will follow state statute and or federal statute. Is really neither here or there. The fact is, is that in keeping with federal law makes a statement. That the city of Lewiston will will do that. Yes, it may repeat the, uh, implied statement. However, it says it. In black and white, in keeping with federal and state law. That's all it states. I have no problems with anything else in the document. And I really have no problems with what was suggested. And therefore I would vote to go along with the suggestion to put that item in there. Uh, as, uh, recommended.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Yes, um, I I've heard it a couple of times. It keeps being mentioned, the implied statement. By definition, there's no statement because it being implied, if it was, if it was stated, it would be an explicit statement. So there's no statement. So I I keep hearing references to an implied statement. And I think it was mentioned that the added language would clarify an ambiguous statement. There is no statement, that the language itself makes it clear that we're going to follow the law. And by by ordinance, every act that we do follows state and federal law. So, um, and also saying there's an insufficient legal review, that's not true. There's a very sufficient legal review. And we got to ask questions of our attorney right before we had this meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Ray.
Just since the the door was open to this conversation about, um, the legal review, I I would also just. Uh, advise the public that we receive our materials well ahead of time. And are able to ask for that legal review prior to putting things on the agenda. I think one of the things I was most disappointed about from the March sixteenth meeting was the fact that many members of the public showed up to. Festify on behalf of this statement. And due to the delay that was asked for by councillors. Uh, I don't know if those folks are just here again tonight. Um, I know if you couldn't make it based on their outreach to me. And their outreach after that meeting was they were incredibly disappointed that they were not given a chance to weigh in on. The statement or the motion table. Um, I think equity inequality shouldn't have to wait for. Um, these situations and and we do receive these materials. Um, city staff does an incredible job preparing them. Well in advance to give us time to ask those questions. And, um, I I think there were opportunities prior to that meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Clement, if we could, you've spoke.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I would just state that at that same meeting, there were a number of people hoping to speak against the statement. They were not given that opportunity either. That's all I've got to say. Move the question.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the role on the amendment.
Sure, uh, so for the role, uh, I'm sorry, for the vote on the amendment, councillor from word one.
No.
Word two.
No.
Word three.
No.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
No.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
No.
Motion failed, received a vote of two to five. So the motion before you now, Mr. Mayor, is the original one is printed in the book.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council on the original motion? And let me just read that real quick for the public's benefit. To approve the order adopting the Lewiston equity statement have. Adopting the Lewiston equity statement has equity statement for the city of Lewiston has written. Okay, I'm not sure. I was looking down, so I didn't see who went up first, but Counselor Johnson.
I think I was last, but sorry. Um, yeah, I mean, I'll keep it brief because I think I've spoken enough now. And at the last meeting, we talked about this. Um, I'm definitely in support of this. I think a lot of work has gone into the making the statement, what it is. Um, I'm certainly supportive of it. I guess, yeah, just to get out my last bits of frustration, I'm disappointed that this went to legal review altogether. To me, the language was very clear. The city clerk read it out herself. Um, so I, to me, it was kind of a waste of time and probably money. Um, so I certainly look forward to supporting this going forward. This helps make us the city that we want to be. It helps us craft our identity going forward as a city that's open to people, not giving handouts to everybody, not not doing that, not letting people, you know. Running their minds or whatever they think this is going to be. But this is simply a vision for the city of accepting everyone in a way that we haven't really looked at that before. And so it's not really radical. And in twenty years, we're going to look back at this as being, we probably should have done it sooner. So, um, I'm very much in support of this and, um, I'll leave my comments there.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ray.
Thank you. Um, I, um. I'm glad I am here to vote on this, um, as I was not able to be present at the March sixteenth meeting, um, and to be able to support this. Um, I think there's a disturbing trend where, uh, some rhetoric that occurs at our national level is sneaking into our local conversations. And I want to say to folks on this call in Lewiston, you are welcome here by lots of us. Um, and I want to be very clear about that because, um, you know. Uh, my language was pleased tonight, but not every night does everyone, um, feel represented by. The people who sit on this council. And I I can only imagine how frustrating that is. Um, I come from an incredible place of privilege. Um, but I do my best to represent those who do not have the capacity to participate in these conversations. Um, to sit at these tables. And I do hope that you do feel represented by some of us. Um. Many of us are here for you.
Thank you, Counselor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, I know as a council, the the public has heard us, um, go around and round, around, you know, a statement and around. You know, the whole legal review thing, or a particular part of the statement. But I think I just want to say I'm in full support of this. I think the purpose and the spirit behind. This equity statement is strong. The timing could not be better. Um, and I just hope that, you know, as a group, we can remember rather than getting hung up on. A phrase, we can remember, you know, the the full content of what's contained within this diversity statement, because there's a whole lot more. Um, there within than what we've been sitting here and and discussing. And so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I, uh. You know, back when this work started, first of all, it's an incredible amount of people that put many hours. So I know that's been said, but I want to acknowledge that. Uh, but as mayor, it was important for me to support a reasonable, meaningful equity statement. And I really do believe this document is both of those. It's reasonable. Uh, and incredibly meaningful when you read this document. And I truly did not expect it to be this meaningful until I read it. Uh, I think, uh, I think they did a really good job representing the values of our community. Uh, with that, I want to go to the public one more time. Uh, just in case someone didn't have an opportunity previously, but feel the need to, uh, comment right now. Anyone's welcome to make a brief, uh, public comment. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Seeing none, call the role, please.
For our councillor from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
No.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
No.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to two.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number seven, please.
Item number seven, order authorizing execution of municipal quick claim deeds for real estate located at four hundred Grove Street. Two sixty-five Pond Road, two twenty-eight Weber Street and fifty-two Oxbow Drive. Requested action to approve the orders authorizing execution of municipal quick claim deeds for real estate located. At four hundred Grove Street, two sixty-five Pond Road, two twenty-eight Webster Street and fifty-two Oxbow Drive.
Hold for passage.
Okay, moved by Counselor Ray. I need a second.
Second.
Second is by Counselor Jalinas. Uh, so these are pretty typical, uh. Uh, Finance Director, is there anything you need to add? Okay. Uh, any questions or comments from the council? To the public. Back to the council. Call the role, please.
Councillor from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Hey, thank you. Agenda item number, gender item number eight, please.
Item number eight, appointments of members to the Public Health Committee and the Housing Committee. There are two items for requested action. The first item is to appoint the following member to the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee. Shana Breton, area residency term to expire January third, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Jalinas, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Questions or comments from the council? To the public. Back to the council. Call the role, please.
Councillor from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero. The next item for requested action is to appoint William Wallace to the Housing Committee. As the representative from the Public Health Committee.
So moved.
Second.
It moved. Okay, moved by Counselor Jalinas, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number nine, please.
Item number nine, appointing R H R Smith and Company as the city's independent auditor. Requested action to appoint R H R Smith and Company as the city's independent auditor for the fiscal years ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, for a total cost of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Director Hunter, anything you'd like to add to that?
I know, other than the fact the city did go out to bid, it's a five-year bid. This was actually due for the FY twenty audit, but with the, excuse me, with the pandemic, R H Smith firm extended for a year. Both firms that responded were qualified firms. R H Smith was sixty-eight thousand dollars less than the other qualifying firm. And I just want to clarify, it may have been a typo. The total for the five years is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Just to clarify that.
Yep, thank you.
Going to order, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Do we have a motion on the table?
We do not yet.
Okay, you making a motion, Counselor Clement?
Also move. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Jensen. We've had our staff presentation. There was a reason I did that. I'm not sure what that is, but I'm sure I'll figure it out. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Director Hunter. I just wanted to ask if we've been satisfied with the services received so far? And then my secondary question is, does this also apply to the school department audit?
Yes, I've been satisfied. And and just to answer your second question, this not only applies to city and school, but the C D B G program, water, sewer, and stormwater, and the nine-one-one committee falls under this audit.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Hunter, did I hear you say that this is really a four-year term?
Five years.
Because the dates, when we look at the requested action for that amount that's listed above under the information, and then for the requested action, that's really four years.
Should be FY twenty-one through twenty-five.
Oh, right, right. My bad. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll.
Counselor from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number ten, please.
Item number ten, adoption of the city council meeting schedule for the months of July and August. Requested action to suspend section one A of the rules governing the city council and only hold one regular meeting during the month of July, said meeting to be held on Tuesday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M, and to hold only one regular meeting during the month of August, said meeting to be held on Tuesday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M.
So moved with an amendment.
Yep, no, that's fine. Let's get a second.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Khalid.
I just would like to amend the dates. So maybe for July, it can be Tuesday, the sixth. And for August, it can be Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, the third, just moving it a week earlier.
Well, any chance you could do the twentieth instead of the sixth? Just July fourth weekend is a tough week to begin with just because of the holiday. So the twentieth would be the week after, and I think you threw out that suggestion earlier.
Yes, I can also do that. Sure, that's fine for the for July, but August, it can be the third.
Okay. So we have to vote on the amendment now first, correct?
Yes.
Any discussions on the amendment, Counselor Clement?
Yeah, if I could hear those dates again, I think we want to separate this as close to four weeks as we possibly can to avoid having to have a bunch of special meetings because something crops up. So if we could somehow come up with a date that's roughly a month apart, I think it would benefit for us. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Ray.
I'm just confused on procedure to start with. So are we taking Counselor Khalid's new dates as the initial motion or as an amendment?
Yeah, that's a good point. We could actually do it just as the initial motion, correct?
Yeah, I would agree with that as the person who made the second initially.
Yeah, and I'm just getting looking for the nod from the clerk.
Sure. So I mean, if it's the, is it the intent to sort of incorporate those dates kind of as a friendly amendment into the original language? Is that okay? Sure, as long as everyone's on board and understanding that, then yes, we can treat it as a friendly amendment, Mr. Mayor, and just change those dates in the original motion.
Okay. And then I'd like to get, so Counselor Clement brought up a good point. We're basically setting it up to have a meeting separated by just one or two weeks. But I, so I'd like to get little input. I, I, both, go ahead, Counselor Khalid. I mean, are those dates really important?
Well, yes, but I would like to change it to keep July as it is, initially suggested, like the thirteenth, I believe, and then just amend August to the, to third, August third. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. I'm just now more worried about procedural where we're at. I mean, is, I mean, it's still, she's just changed.
I would still keep a friendly amendment. I'd go for it.
All right, so let's have those dates one more time, please.
Oh, me? So I would like to make a motion, a friendly amendment to change August from August tenth to August third.
Okay, and then July.
Keep it as, yeah.
Okay. All right. So we're going to take that as the the original motion with a friendly amendment. Unless there's an objection to that. Counselor Clement?
Sorry, my hand wasn't up, but I'm still concerned about the time between dates.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Not to put anyone on the spot or betray any confidential information or anything, but this was requested via email by one of our colleagues in order to accommodate visiting family. And I think, you know, after the year we've had, I think showing that courtesy to our colleagues would be really helpful if we can do it. But I did want to hear if the city administrator has thoughts on the feasibility of making those states happen.
I understand Counselor Clement's concern. That was what we were trying to balance was to have some some time between. But I think looking at, from the fly, looking at, you know, the thirteenth of July, that would give us really three weeks, you know, before the August third. So it's not quite maybe the ideal, but I think, I think we can make it work. I do think those dates would work. You know, it's, it's, yeah, I guess that's just it. I think it could work, and we can make that work, balance that between those two dates, July thirteenth and August third.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clement.
Doesn't that, by putting it on August third, leave us until September seventh for a whole meeting, a whole month? It does. And I would just, you know, I think that if, if, obviously, if, you know, a special meeting was required for any reason, we can certainly call a special meeting later in the month of August. But it essentially is about the same timeframe that we were looking at having between these two meetings, really from August third to September is about a month, which is about what we were trying to strike. So it is a lengthy time. I hear you very loud and clear on that, but I think that I think we can manage it.
And I think typically, staff understands in general the summer schedule for two months. And I think they try to get either important issues that are going to be caused long debates either before or after that. So I think, you know, we may have one longer meeting, but we have a history of moving things pretty well with this council, so I don't think that'll be an issue. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Sure. And just for clarification for everyone, the motion is printed in your book, is identical with the exception that we're just changing out August seventeenth to August third. Just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. So with that, excuse me, with that, counsel from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number eleven.
Our reports and updates.
Counselor Ray.
Thank you. From school committee land, we voted last week to ask the school administration to bring back a budget to us, which would result in an increase of about seventy-five cents on the tax rate, which is much lower than the initial proposal of one dollar and forty-six cents. We are asking administration to take a hard look at how they can use the relief funds creatively, but also how we can preserve one point five million dollars of our fund balance moving forward without using the entire account, which is best practice, in my opinion, and we hope to move forward with a fund balance policy soon. In addition to that, we are also trying to lessen the tax burden for this year while also future-proofing the next couple budgets. Going forward over the next couple of years, some of those expenses are recurring. And so when we look at the relief funds, we don't really want to put a ton of recurring expenses in there because it's just going to hit the tax rate at a later date. And so we're trying to be responsible. We had a great conversation to this effect last Wednesday, and I think the Wednesday before as well, and finally settled on feeling comfortable with that number of seventy-five cents is what we're aiming for. We'll see how that looks tomorrow when we meet. In addition to hearing more about the FY twenty-two budget, we'll be hearing from the English Language Learning Department about how we'll be looking at twenty-first century after-school programming funding. Our personnel and our personnel policies will be reviewed, which cover many of our employees.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports or updates from councils? Okay, agenda item number twelve. Any other business city councils or others have relating to Lewiston City Government? Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. This is relating to the initial comment that was made by the teacher regarding open fields. So in the past several weeks, I have been getting constituent calls and social media outreach to reopen the basketball court at Kennedy Park, as well as to have open soccer fields. I have brought this concern with city leadership and have not been successful. For example, the neighborhood surrounding Kennedy Park, many of the youth from the area have no access to what they love doing, whether that's football or soccer. Many of the kids are noticing that the basket, the skate park is open and is being used by youth outside the neighborhood while the basketball court is closed. So this issue is about equity. The youth are seeing the disparity and inequity when it comes to recreational activities and open fields. The city has put people of color at a disadvantage when it comes to these programs and services, especially those that are proactive and encourage good behavior. Since I have lived in Lewiston, the city leadership has continued to overlook and underserved the black and brown youth of our community. And recently, I recently helped, you know, organize a meeting with our Congressman Jared Golden among like twenty other youth. And the big topic was recreational activities, how, you know, that's lacking and that they don't have places to play in the city, et cetera. So it's unfortunate the city, you know, continues to be a barrier and obstacle to these opportunities, especially at a high-end time of social justice. And that, you know, as a city, recently, we had a council retreat where we talked about caring about the community safety, supporting recreational opportunities and other things as well. And I'm just disappointed by the cities in action to, you know, to reach these goals in terms of basketball courts and open fields. So I wanted to bring it to the council's attention and for us to take action, but also to seek feedback and, you know, responses from other counselors as well in a public setting. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it was councilors that approached the city leaders with closing the basketball hoops. I think you were one of them as well back a year ago when our, our numbers. So I, I just, you know, I want to, I know staff has been talking about this for a couple of weeks. In fact, they had a potential date set up before it was brought up recently. So I'm not sure a city staff or administration is ignoring or or targeting specific populations. But, you know, again, it was councilors and I who demanded that we close those basketballs because there was absolutely no social distancing. All right, so Counselor Clement?
Another issue entirely, Mr. Mayor, but if this is the case, I, I take a bit of offense at the comment that was just made. I think probably city staff or the administration is operating under guidelines from the state government in many instances. Are we not? I would assume that'd be the one reason things would still be closed. If not, then let's get, let's get moving on that. And if this is the end of that item, when I have a moment, I'd like to bring up something else. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Jensen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would, you know, offer my support for opening the basketball courts as well. The basketball courts in Kennedy Park, Kennedy Park is my ward. I try to be as protective of it as I can, as I'm sure the city administrator knows. I don't think, I think it's different than it was about a year ago. About a year ago, people were staying at home. Transition was kind of stopping that way. We're trying to flatten the curve. That was the same, flatten the curve. I think now, a lot of these kids that'll be playing basketball, even if they don't follow the rules and they get a little bit too close to each other, I wouldn't say that they're just all going home. They're going to be at home anyways. If they're not at the basketball court, they're going to be in close contact with other people, probably. Kids are. I mean, working in elementary school, it's hard to keep kids away at recess duty, to be perfectly honest. So I think it's different than it was a year ago. And I think if you look at the big picture, that kids are going to be out, they're going to be doing something. I'd rather have them something to do that's productive. That aspect, the equity component as well, whether you like it or not, the fact is that the people that are going to be skateboarding just next to the basketball courts are going to be probably people that tend to be less of a racial minority. They, you know, that's probably the only way I'm going to put that there. But to me, it is kind of standard as an equity issue as well. Again, not something that's completely apparent, but something I've learned over the last year to address some hidden biases. And I don't know if I necessarily call this a bias, but it's something that we're overlooking as a city, and to me, it is an equity issue. So as the counselor who has the Kennedy Park in his ward, I very much like to see it open. I don't think that the goal that we're aiming for by keeping it closed is actually being achieved. And for the greater good for the city, it makes sense to open them up.
Thank you. I'm going to let the city administrator respond, and then I'll, I'll go to you, Counselor Ray, if you're okay with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start with, you know, so we are following guidelines. We are, we are, we are maintaining the safety of our community, and this was a quest, a request at the beginning of COVID. There's no question to shut these down because of complaints that we received from our community because of the the health hazards that were occurring. The reality is, the current situation is pandemic has not changed. The the numbers, looking at what the numbers were at the same timeframe last year, and when, you know, during this, they're actually mirror pretty closely and track pretty closely to what we're seeing. So I very much support personally opening these basketball courts and getting this out there. This shift in change in 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 direction is welcome for us to to review that and to take a look at that. But it is a change in the direction. It is not at all an intentional move by leadership in any way to create an inequity, to 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 do this because of anyone's color of their skin. And to imply that leadership was doing that is offensive. I'm very offended by that. We care very much about everyone in this community, and we are trying to provide recreation to everyone on an equal basis. The 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 fact is, we did these decisions, we made these decisions out of the concern for public safety and out of complaints. This is a shift in the direction that we're receiving from counselors. We welcome it. But we will, we will have to go through a process to make sure that we implement and open these in an appropriate and inappropriate. But we will, we will have to go through a process to make sure that we implement and open these in an appropriate and in a safe way. We're there to do it, but this is the change. And so to imply that we were doing anything other than following CDC guidelines and doing the very best for our community is offensive. And I really just, I, just not appropriate for staff to be taken or to be said that about our leadership. Thank you.
I would agree. Counselor Ray.
Thank you. I can't quite remember if I was a counselor who was pushing for these courts to close last year. I imagine I was because, you know, at this point last year, a little earlier, COVID seemed like if you touched someone with it, you would get it. And I think that was my impression at that time with a lack of research. I think over time, my approach here and now is that this is, the, the basketball courts are an outdoor activity. It's right by City Hall. It's right by the police station. And so if there are issues that crop up, I think part of the impetus for this conversational shift too comes from some incidents over the weekend with violence, which is deeply concerning, of course. So, I mean, I think when we're, when we're talking about that shift, I will acknowledge if I've changed my mind on it, I'm, I'm saying I changed my mind at this point. I think there's all, we know a lot more now. And so I would really encourage that, that outdoor recreation is prioritized. I think another part of this conversation that's weighing on me is I feel like every year in my four years as a counselor, we've talked about field use and open field time for Lewiston youth to play soccer. And that's been a part of this conversation as well. I heard from some of Congressman Golden's staff about that and liaising with the city, and is it funding that's a problem? And I, I still don't know the answer four years in. And maybe that's just me not understanding policies around recreation. But I think, I think the goal is in this space to come from a place of yes, because we are talking mostly about youth and youth who might not have folks who can go and advocate for them or can go and pay for a recreation program. I think we've been playing sports relatively safely at, at the school levels, and I think recreation has plans to come back for those, those opportunities. But what about just open play space and open recreation space? So I really want us to shift that thinking and, and start thinking about how we can open safely. And just anecdotally, you know, whenever I'm down by Kennedy Park and see the skate park, there, there is no masking going on. Folks are sharing cigarettes, like, not, not the pinnacle of public health. And, you know, people can make their own personal choices regarding those things. I, I hope that, you know, if we do move towards opening the basketball courts, if we open a field for soccer, maybe we can install some hand sanitation, and maybe we can also make sure that folks have proper PPE and are playing with masks on. But at some point too, it's just like, kids are going to play somewhere, and I hope we can give them this, this space that they pay for.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely am supportive of opening up the basketball courts, but I just want to say, you know, perhaps in an attempt to counter, you know, I, I, I am very, very grateful for the way the city of Lewiston has managed this. I have not seen any type of, you know, intentional keeping an activity from a certain population. I've just not seen that happen. And I think, you know, you've done an amazing job really trying to navigate this pandemic, keeping our community safe. And while I am totally in support of opening the basketball courts, I would say that I want to own the fact that this is a change in, in direction. Absolutely, nothing more than that. And again, just want to extend, you know, my gratitude to the city for doing the work that they've been doing this past year. It's been very difficult. And I offer that in, in bounds, hopefully for that offense.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement.
Are we moving on now, or?
No, no, I just, I wasn't.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, Counselor Cleed, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I was that counselor a year ago that I'm living in the downtown area that I saw twenty or more youth congregating when they were supposed to be at home and social distancing. And I'm glad that, you know, the city has taken steps to close down these areas. But the kids have nothing to do. It's been a year. And, you know, Ramadan fasting is coming up, and they don't have, like, during, you know, when people break their fast, they tend to go to soccer and play, but they have nowhere to play. A lot of our youth have been traveling to Scarborough to pay ten dollars or more to play in their fields. That, that money should be, you know, be brought back to Lewiston. And our youth shouldn't be traveling for thirty minutes or more. And yeah, and also why I brought this up tonight was because at the trampoline park, there was ten or more youth that were fighting. So that, you know, that's a concern of community safety, where when kids congregate and these situations happen, I think we should be ahead of this and like, you know, support kids as much as we can by providing them proactive and better things to do in the community rather than, you know, fighting with each other for God knows what reason, and kids will always fight. And lastly, everyone, like a lot of kids live in, in the, in the Kennedy Park area, Knox Street and all the tree streets. And kids, kids who are outside from the community, from that neighborhood, and who do use the skate park are not socially distancing. They're not wearing masks. And this is very evident, because I walk there and I see every day. So if, if we, we are going to continue to close down the basketball court because of COVID reasons, was, you know, is completely understandable, but please let's take the steps to also close down the skate park to ensure, you know, people are not using that, that facility so that they can, you know, spread the virus and, and so on. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cleed. Counselor Ray.
Mr. Ray, I just wanted to ask, I realize this would be likely unconventional, but some folks in the attendee section raised their hands throughout this process. I was just curious if you might allow public comment.
Good plan on it. Thank you. Counselor Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with much of what is being said with regards to occupying our young people's time, especially with sports and stuff like that. However, I also think quite a bit as to city administrator and the rules, state rules, federal rules, what have you, that he and the assistants that administrate must follow. There are decisions to make. Somebody's got to make them. And many times, they got to make them on the spur of the moment. And not everybody's satisfied with the results. So this evening, we can see some of that through our discussions. And a, a lot of it is applicable, and I do not disagree with it. But I think we should let our administration, administration do their work and probably check into the situation after the meeting today to see what parameters they might be able to utilize to possibly allow that type of activity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll, I'll switch to public comment. I'm going to ask the three folks that have their hands raised to keep it very brief. Typically, we don't have public comment in this area of the agenda. So if you could, Dale from, I would assume you see it this way, I see it, Omar, Iburn, Ibrahim. I know I'm not pronouncing that right. I apologize. And I'm not even going to try the first name of the second one, about the third one. But if you could bring them in in that order, one at a time.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, can you?
My name is Omar.
Okay, thank you. Yes, state your name for us real quick. Appreciate it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Omar Ibrahim. I thank you all, the city council members, for all the hard work that you guys are doing out there. We brought a few, you guys are represented as well. If I may talk about, you know, the, the, the topic of the discussion right now about the basketball court. I think we need the city administration to step up and open that basketball court as soon as possible. I think we're gradually opening the city, or maybe even the whole state. And I think it's the right time to open that basketball court. It's really sad to see the skateboard, you know, being open. And we have like crowded youth of different color playing there, and then the basketball court scores. And I, I, at some point, even it's really sad to see that, you know, our city is not doing a lot. Throughout the winter, we have been investing in Scarborough, in Saco, in Topsham, about, about like almost, let me see, like twenty thousand. Why is now, why is, why is our city not doing anything? Maybe like building a, an indoor field for us, so we can invest that to our community, to our city. So I think we need this, our city to, our city administration to step up and maybe do something as soon as we, as soon as possible. If the, if the city can't do anything, I think they should give, at least as the go-ahead. Me personally, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to step up and knock every door. And maybe build, maybe, maybe an indoor field or whatever for my community personally. I, I, I think if I go and knock every door, be it within this, within this state or maybe out of, out of state, I can bring some money to support my community. But we, our city administration is not supporting us at all. Please, let's reopen the basketball court, and let's have an indoor field for our youths. You see how what's happening outside, what happened last weekend on, on the, the, the trampoline. There was fighting. You see a lot of news and going in numbers. They don't have, they have nowhere to have fun. We don't have any soccer fields at all. The high schools are always occupied. The city administration should please step up and do something.
All right, thank you, sir. Good evening. If you could just state your name for us and keep it very brief, please.
Obad Antonio. And I thank you guys for listening to me. The reason why I came here is my issues. I wanted to talk about soccer. And I know a lot of people are talking about basketball. I think we should focus on soccer too. And the reason why I think this, like, is an issue talking about soccer and basketball is because I feel like this through sport and other things define who are like future youth is here in Lewiston. For example, I feel like most of the things that are done in Lewiston are more focused on adults and other things, and not really the youth. And I feel like opening the basketball courts, opening some soccer facility will really focus on youth and giving them, you know, exposure to other states and giving them more opportunities. I feel like a lot of us youth have talents, you know, basketball, soccer. But most of them don't really go anywhere because they don't have anywhere to begin. And I feel like this small parks like Kennedy Park, soccer facilities or soccer tournaments that are organized or that are not organized here, yeah, they organize other cities and other states, will really help our youth, you know, to be some, be something in the future. And most of us, we have to go, we have to drive like Sophia said, we have to drive hours and hours just to go attend a soccer tournament or to go play like soccer, basketball. And I feel like it would be very beneficial if we had like soccer facilities and basketball places here in Lewiston. So I wouldn't go travel hours and hours, and we wouldn't go, we wouldn't have to go to other states due to the things we like and the things that make us happy.
All right, thank you, sir. Good evening. Good evening, sir. If you could just unmute your mic and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Mukhtar Isak. And I want to thank you guys for the things you did for the city of Lewiston. I appreciate everything I did. I'm here to talk about soccer. So I support the idea Omar and Antonio said. Lately, since spring started, you know, we all want to play soccer, but we've been going to base college, Lewiston High School, everywhere we go to, we get, keep getting kicked out, like, nobody wants to give us a field to play with. Like, we have nowhere to go. Unlike, you know, unlike adults, some kids have no patience. I know we all have been there, experienced this when we were young, because we, like, we never listened to our parents when we were young. When they told us stay away, we never stayed away. And nowadays, all the kids want to do is go outside, have some fun, enjoy the time. And all, and all I ask of you guys is, you know, give us a field and, you know, help us out. And thank you guys for your time. That's all I have to say. Sorry.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about that. I thanked that guy and everything. Do we have one final one, public comment?
Hi, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you very much. If you could introduce yourself real quick and then just be brief, and thank you for sharing.
Hi, my name is Ibrahim Mohammed. The, the two guys that I spoke to, of them were my teammates. So it is true, I want to add on to what councilwoman or councilperson Sophia said. Yes, so for KP, like, we, it was totally understandable when you guys shut it down at the beginning of COVID. As I use KP, a lot of my friends, a lot of kids that I know do. So in the community, it was totally understandable when COVID first started. We're like, yeah, it's a good idea, you know? But now, you know, COVID has lessened, and not only that, the state, the skating park is open. And we see a lot of people that do go there, and then KP is still open for people. KP is still closed, I mean, for people that want to get involved in basketball. And now we just don't see a reason why, you know, and a lot of focus, I mean, a lot of folks are willing to mask up to play and follow social distancing rules. And it's just better for kids in our community if you guys want to like, keep kids away from trouble. If you want to see them be productive, because a lot of kids aim to even be professional basketball players. And with that goal in their mind, that's like, that's their future, they're thinking about their future. And if they're not expressing it and playing basketball in Kennedy Park, they're going to do other stuff. You know what they say about idle hands and the devil and whatnot? Like, those kids are gonna, if they're not allowed to be playing in KP, not playing basketball with which they have a passion and love it, and they're going to be doing other stuff that probably won't be good for them, you know, drugs or just stuff that's not good. And sports is a way out for a lot of these kids, and it brings them together. And so that's my input on that. Also, I wanted to add on to the, the soccer fields. And for years, a lot of the, a lot of people in our community have said that they want soccer for, they don't have a place to play. Like, kids will try to play at Bates or the high school field, and they keep getting kicked out and rejected. And I, I would like, love it to, I would love to see a soccer field in Lewiston where the community can go to it, go to it and just have fun, because a lot of these kids, they just, they just feel like, oh, if I can't play, then I'll just go do something else and whatnot. So an indoor play, soccer and outdoor, if you guys could get that for us, that would mean a lot to the community. And like Sophia said, instead of us go, because I'm one of those people that goes to Portland or Scarborough to pay ten dollars to play at a field in Portland, when I could be putting that money into our own community in Lewiston, you know? So that's all I wanted to say. I have a lot of people that are in support of this idea. If you guys want me to start a petition or something to get you guys attention, because it's been years and a lot of people are giving up hope, you know? So just whatever you guys can do, and if you guys could really, like, be serious or put that up there, that'd be great for the city of Lewiston. And that's all I have to say. I don't want to take too much time. Thank you guys for hearing me out.
Yeah, thank you. Any final thoughts? City Administrator Dotte.
I'm actually going to, Deputy City Administrator Doughty respond. He has, I think, something to share. Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to bring everybody's attention. Probably a week or so ago, it may have been last week, we got approval from National Park Service for some mitigation that we've been. Sorry, I must have hit that with my wrist. I just wanted to bring everybody's attention to last week or the week before, I think it was last week, we found final approval to move forward with a soccer field at the Hudson Bus Terminal. The, the idea of that soccer field is to be open play soccer field, first come, first served. That's been designed complete. It'll be going up to bid within the next week or two. And hopefully will be open later this summer, fall, or, or spring, whenever we can get the grass to grow. So that's being constructed this summer to fill that need.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you so much, Dale, for bringing that Hudson up because it was in the back of my head and I'm very much excited for that. One thing that I would like to, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I would like, you know, for the city leadership and for us to consider is, you know, when when the public fields are not reserved and to make that as a open field that can be accessible by anyone. So that's one, like, from these conversations that we've been having tonight, I think we need like some sort of action. And I think that's something that I would like to see happen sooner than later.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Thank you. And I want to sincerely thank the youth who spoke tonight. I mean, I feel like these emails have gone around and around before in the past. And I I don't mean to cast dispersions on anyone. I think continuity of staff has been a question and continuity of counselors even sometimes. And just not knowing who the right person to approach about these situations. And and as a counselor, there are situations that I feel like we run into that we don't know who the right person is to get the voices heard. And so I I'm thankful for Counselor Khalid bringing this forward in in a public forum because it can sometimes feel like, and I I don't mean to report that this is anyone's intention, but it sometimes feels like, oh, well, that's not what we're gonna do or that's not the process. And then nothing changes. And so I I appreciate the ability to have this conversation at a public forum. I I do feel poorly that not everyone felt that they were respected in that. And I apologize if I had an hand in that. But government is so opaque sometimes. And it's really hard to to find transparency in a lot of these situations. I just know from my background, growing up with folks who couldn't access government in the way that they wanted to. It it's really hard sometimes. So I hope that, you know, having these conversations in public session helps us move forward and helps us gain some access for folks who who don't have the capacity.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say briefly, as it comes to city administration, both our administrator and deputy administrator have done an awesome job over the past year. For anybody to say anything else is is not only offensive, it's absolutely wrong. I think based on what I'm hearing tonight, I have no problem with opening these things up. I'm sure that administration is gonna continue to follow the guidelines. To my knowledge, Lewiston has not been cited by the Attorney General as, oh, one major government entity in Anderson County was and told that they better follow the rules or else. The governor has still got us under an emergency order and her word basically is law. She and Dr. Shaw rule the place right now. So if they say it's fine, then we can do it. And I'm sure the city is gonna be in tune with that. As soon as we can open it up, I have all full faith and confidence in the administration that they're going to do that. They don't want to keep this stuff closed down. And I'm sure they don't want to hear dispersions on their motives behind following rules and regulations that have been dictated to them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And was there another subject that you wanted to speak on?
Yes, if we can change the topic now.
Counselor Khalid?
I have another, I have another topic after.
Go ahead, Counselor Clement.
Thanks, sir. I don't want to steal thunder from my colleague Ward Seven. However, the situation on River Street, I think all of us are aware of. I would like to ask administration, how soon can we get this on a workshop and address the issue? This is totally unacceptable. The answers that I'm seeing going back and forth between parties there, something needs to be done. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can just quickly respond, yeah, certainly that is on the list as as Councilman mentioned. Counselor Jalinas had had sent a similar request earlier that everyone was copied on. Couple of things, one, we are working to get that on in short order. We have the budget workshops and that. So we're just trying to balance that. I expect that it will happen in April, maybe a little bit later in April, we'll be able to get it in, but I think we can. On top of that, I just wanted to note that we are having conversations and meetings amongst staff to have some discussion about the the very same issues. It's clear that staff have taken additional drive-throughs, you know, beyond our code enforcement who have spent a significant amount of time dealing with some issues out there. But I think, you know, again, staff have have seen it and taken another look at it and I think share the concerns. So the concerns are absolutely shared. And it will be, like I said, internal conversations and meetings are already starting, but we tend to hopefully get this on by, you know, some point in April. We just, we obviously have a very aggressive budget workshop schedule at this point of trying to squeeze that in. We want to make sure we give it the time that it needs for the.
Thank you. Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to propose to have like the Zoom meeting viewed in a gallery view rather than speaker view. Sometimes it's difficult for me to see, feel, I mean, of course, we're not in, you know, in a real setting. But I think it would be better served if we are in a gallery and we're able to see all the counselors.
You realize you can control your view though, right?
No, I mean, like, for, you know, for you or for whoever is like redoing the recordings, especially when it's uploaded to YouTube. I don't know how the school, I feel like the school does it similarly, like in terms of gallery view. But sometimes, you know, some counselors are not loud enough to speak and some counselors are a little bit louder. But I think it would just be helpful if we were able to see all the counselors.
So I I just want to clarify, you're talking about for the public, not for individual counselors, right?
Oh, yeah, for the public, especially when, yeah, we we upload it to YouTube.
I shared the same concern with our city administrator, I think, last week. He was gonna look into it.
Yes, we'll talk with our MIS. I don't know, I'm I'm not as savvy on that in terms of how that, you know, when we, because right now, as you said, it's gallery view for us. And I can see, you know, the Hollywood Squares, sorry, you know, the the boxes. But, you know, I don't know how it's projected, I guess, how it's broadcast out is the word I'm looking for there. So what we need to do is I'll just check with MIS and see if we can change that setting for when it goes out that way.
Okay, thank you. Did you have more, Counselor Khalid? I didn't mean to cut you off. I just originally thought you were asking for your view.
No, no, I'm I'm I'm, I know technology, don't worry.
Any other city government business? Seeing none, long meeting, some some challenging discussions tonight. I appreciate everybody's willingness to to work through this together as a group. So thank you and appreciate the tough discussions. With that, I want to attain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
And Word Seven?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, everybody.